Good evening. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Dayton Board of Selectmen. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person. The joint Zoom meeting ID is 872-3287-8696, passcode 717096. Those who are unable to access it via the computer may do so by phone at 1-929-205-6099. I would also want to remind people that it will be posted on Dayton's Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdighton. Public input may also be provided by contacting the office, board of selectmen@dightonmass.gov prior to the meeting or via Zoom. At this time, I would ask that all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag and a moment of silence to follow.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, the town of Dayton and its Town Hall family have had two deaths. Longtime Dayton resident Michael J. Macedis, age 66, of Dayton, passed away on April 17 of natural causes. He founded his own business, Macedis Construction and Dayton. And recently, we have learned of the passing of Francis Campbell of Reinham, stepdad to Board of Health agent and stormwater engineer Todd Pillin. At this time, I respectfully ask for a moment of silence. At this time scheduled is Mr. Rosario, Lions Club.
Good evening, Selectmen. I'm here to represent the Lions Club of putting a bocce court behind the pavilion there. We started this a couple of years ago, but since, you know, with COVID and all that, we put a hole on everything. And now we're ready to go. All we want to do is just put the court. We're going to hole off on putting the roof because finances and all that. And that's it. I got drawings and I got pictures that we got off the Internet with somebody else down in, I think it was Pennsylvania or New Jersey that are doing. And all we want to do is just put the courts down. It's going to be 80 feet, 40 feet wide, but the court itself is 12 feet inside. And it's going to have four-foot aprons of concrete. In the middle will be six-foot aprons. And it'll be something like, something like that.
Thank you.
That's all I got, too. And like I said, you know, that way, you know, when there's, if somebody has a function and they want to play bocce, it's right there. Maintenance, there isn't practically hardly any maintenance, probably, you know, fall just blow some leaves off and that's it, you know? That's all I got.
No, thank you. Mr. Pacico, do you?
Yeah, I'm a member of the Lions Club, so unfamiliar with this project, so I won't make any comments on it.
Okay, thank you.
I have no comments.
Mr. Mullin.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. So we don't have a recommendation, like at this point, Mr. Chairman. One of the things, so this request came forward last week by a member of the Lions Club. So one of the things, one of the things that I would like to do together with the building, together with the building commissioner is really do a site visit, oh, you know, like in real, oh, you know, like at the site, at the location behind here, oh, you know, like, oh, you can have a conversation with the Lions Club to talk about the space and exactly what this will be, especially in compare, especially in relation to the fact that, oh, like, in terms of our whole Town Hall campus, we're looking at the future of a number of things here, oh, you know, like, and we want to, and we really want to make sure that this will work, oh, you know, understanding all the things we're trying to do and envision as well. Like, so like, if we could have a few weeks, if the building commissioner can have a few weeks to meet with the Lions and then come back with the recommendation, you know, that is what I would recommend at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin.
Chairman, do you mind if I?
Please.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Dayton. So I have a few questions, and as the Lions know, I'm a large supporter. I always support everything you do, and I think what you do for the community is great. You do exactly that. You bring the community together, so that's important. So I have a couple of questions because in expanding upon Administrator Mullin's questions or comments, we need to be mindful that we only have a certain amount of area on this complex, and we have some lineal plans that need to be thought about before we take up any square footage. So first, and I don't know who wants to comment on it, I'm not familiar with bocce, only what I've seen on the Internet. Is this something that is well received? Is there a large demand for this? Is it like similar to a basketball court?
Yeah, it's a very popular sport that's coming up. They have a lot of organization, a lot of clubs, they have tournaments, you know, they just come down and they just play ball. All this is supposed to be putting balls down.
So this would be tournament-driven?
Actually, um, the re-
To the chair?
I, at this point in time, there is usually a process for all construction projects that are done on town property. And the first thing that should happen is, as Mr. Mullin mentioned, that you meet with Mr. Agia and Mr. Mullin to fill out the appropriate paperwork and have those discussions. I do know in speaking with Park and Recreation Commissioner Kevin Smith has said that this project has their favorable recommendation. However, before we get into public input and discussion for our approval, we need for the process to be followed. And that process will be a preliminary meeting-
Okay.
-and a signed approval.
Okay, so if-
I will get a letter from Kevin expressing his approval, and then when we go to vote and bring this back up as a review, discuss, and act, we will have all the information in front of us and the recommendation of both Mr. Smith and Mr. Agia. And at that time, I will entertain, you know, further discussion. As Mr. Agia has mentioned, and I truly understand this, the Lions Club has been the backbone of this town. What the Lions Club has done for this town has been incredible. And the fact that it's all volunteer service and done out of kindness and finance expense of individual citizens is certainly worthy and will go a long way in us helping you to be successful. I don't foresee this to be a major problem. However, I do ask that we follow the same process as we do with, whether it be the library, private citizen. And I ask that we have a meeting on that-
Okay.
-with Mr. Mullin. And Mr. Mullin and Mr. Agia will then come and ask to reschedule this.
Okay, that makes sense. That way we can discuss parking, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes. And then when you, when you come, it'll be, all the discussions that need to happen will be done. When you come in, it'll be just approval.
Okay.
With that in mind, I would ask for a motion to table this request until such time as Mr. Mullin feels that all the approval process has been completed and it'll come before us for a final vote.
Make a motion to table the project.
I will step down as chairman to second that motion.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Chairman, is the ADA coordinator going to be involved in this also?
I would imagine that-
The answer is yes.
-the approval process includes that.
Correct.
My understanding, there is an approval form, and there are certain people that will need to sign off on this.
Yeah.
My understanding that ADA is one of the people required-
Because it's a public space, it will have to go through the ADA coordinator, correct?
The only question that I had is, this is not near any, or you haven't, the only question that will come up, and I'm sure will be resolved before it gets back to us, is whether or not any conservation or stormwater issues exist.
Right. Yeah, I think this is in its beginning's discussion stages, as you indicated, there's still a lot more talks that need to have to happen. And understanding that we only have a certain amount of area on the campus, its location is going to have to be figured out now so that we can plan accordingly for the future.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion as second.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
I will step down as chairman. Also, aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Mr. Pacico is abstaining because he is a member of the Lions Club. Thank you.
Can I get my papers and cap? That's all the ones I got.
Oh, certainly, certainly. You share this with Mr. Agia? Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Cavalo, Chairman of the Trails Committee. He's going to give us an update and presentation on the status of not only his committee, but hopefully the trail.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Cavalo, 2124 Tommy's Way, and as Chairman mentioned, Chairman of the Dayton Trails Committee. So I'm going to take you to, through status and updates of what we've been up to, more some exciting news from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, what's going on. I don't know if anybody here had an opportunity to dial into some of the meetings. You were on there as well, right? So this will be news to some, and some folks have seen this, so next slide. So the agenda, gonna hit right into the front there, talking about the DCR Sweet Snoll L Trail Project, kind of an update where they're at. Second bullet is sort of a decision point. I'm not expecting to solve, come up with a solution tonight, but wanted to initially just get it out there because we need a decision on what we want to do with the trailheads because it does involve town property. And then circling back to what we've been up to on Trails Committee and then kind of wrapping it up. So, next slide. All right, so if you're aware, whether or not you're aware, the Department of Conservation and Recreation is planning to put a two-mile rail trail in the heart of Dayton. This is going to take place surrounding the Sweet Snoll State Park in the middle of town, so roughly one mile north, one mile south on Commonwealth property, so it's state property. They're going to take the rail bed and they're going to turn that into a, into a trail. So as of January of 2022, they awarded a contract to a consultant with the intent of starting the work, and the goal is to be at 25% of the design by this, this fall, September 2022. A couple of things have happened since January. We've had a couple of meetings. On early March, on 3rd of March, we had a stakeholder meeting, so it was a meeting between DCR and stakeholders within the town, so it was more of an official department head sort of meeting. And also, again, at the end of March, there was a public listening session. This was very successful. It opened up to anybody who wanted to, wanted to connect. Both of these unfortunately were remote via, it wasn't Zoom, it was Teams, but it gave people in town the opportunity to ask questions, and people were asking questions we expected, and a lot, a lot of answers went back, and I think people left there very happy with what the plans were. I provided the link on, on this particular slide. You can go to the mass.gov page, and you see that on your screen and hopefully in your package. If you go to the website, you can see the videos for the meetings, the presentations for the meetings, a lot of information. After the meeting on the 29th, the DCR went out and had a public information survey that wanted people's inputs, so they collected a lot of inputs, so, and it's going to be a follow-up meeting. So, next slide is kind of the footprint. Roughly two miles, like I mentioned, the south end, which is number one there on your map, that's on Somerset Avenue behind Alice's Last Stop. If you've ever been back there, you'll notice there is sort of a, there is a, a trailhead already there. It's a clearing that was done a couple of years back, so there's a parking area so you can get access to the railroad right of way right now. But that's, that's where it ends, that's where it comes out, right on Somerset Avenue. And if you look all the way north at number six, that's on Sandpiper Way, and I'll show a map in a couple of slides here of what that looks like. And all along the, the path from number one to number six, there are a bunch of different milestones that they pointed out there. Number three is a vicinity of Sweet Snoll State Park. Number four is Bristol Aggie and also where we are right now, so if you were to look behind Spratley Field here, you'd see the, the trail continue. One interesting thing that they, they need to work on is the Main Street Bridge passing. That's, that's actually what they need to determine what they want to do. Center Street?
Center Street.
Center Street. I'll get those right one day. Center Street, because that used to be, used to pass through with the railroad, but it was filled in, and so they're, they're looking at that right now. So that's between three and, three and four, actually between, yeah, three and four on your map there. And so they've already started going through and doing some of the work here. So if you go to the next slide, unfortunately, the animation got lost on the PDF here, but this is the multi-phased project. So between now and the end of September, the intent is to be done with phases one and two. We are currently on phase one. So by June-ish timeframe, they're expecting to be done with all the site analysis, which is all the land research, coming out, doing the site surveys. They've come out and done some demarcation work along the south of the bridge and north of the bridge. So they've already been doing a lot of work. The consultant has been out here and talking to Mr. Mullin. We had to help them to do some of the work on the north side of that. So that, that's, that's kicked off, and it's, it's going well, going along quite well, with the intent with, to have some kind of conceptual design by June, and then schematic design, 25% of the full schematic design in this phase one, phase two by, by September timeframe. And you could see, as you look all the way down the bottom of there, the intent right now is to, to actually break ground and start construction in November of 2023, knowing how some of that others, those other things might take, you know, phase five, bid and award, phase services, things might get extended out further. So I'd anticipate, you know, looking at my crystal ball, that early spring 2024 is when I would expect construction, you know, realistically, knowing how these things probably might balloon out a little bit. So we're, we're still a couple of years away, but it's, it's really exciting. So the next slide just gives a little more detail on the phase one. Like I said, they've already started some of this. They did their site walk at one point. The DCR was here with all of their potential offers, and then they down-selected and picked a, picked a consultant. They've done some of the wetland delineation, that's already been done. I think they completed that entirely. We have the stakeholders meeting, and then they're going through and really looking at, I'd say, number four and five at this point. And I'm anticipating at, at one point between now and June, or probably after June, there'll be some kind of team design workshop that hopefully we can get the information on and, and learn more about what their intents are, intentions are. I think the one thing I want to highlight, anybody listening here on, on Zoom, and, and so if you're not aware, is the cost of this project to the town of Dayton is absolutely nothing. This is all on state property. They are fully funding the design, fully funding construction, fully funding maintenance for years to come. So this is, this is a gift to the town of Dayton because it just so happens that it's happening on, the, the seat of it is the state park, Sweet Snoll, and then because of the state property, north and south of there, we're, we're reaping the benefit of that, so this is fantastic. All right, so that's where they're at. So this is where, next slide is where we kind of need your help, we being the Trails Committee and need to know how best to proceed. So as part of this work that they're undertaking on their two-mile rail trail are the two trailheads. I pointed out on the map, the one on the north is at Sandpiper Way, and the one on the south is on Somerset Avenue behind Alice's Last Stop. Here's the two catches and the next two bullets. So if we do, and, and at those two pieces of property in those two locations, the, the state doesn't own those properties, the town of Dayton does. So if we do nothing and we maintain 100% control of these two pieces of property, DCR said, and I quote, "that they will only complete design of the trailheads up to 25%. The town of Dayton will be required to fund the remaining 75% plus 100% of construction," which is, could be substantial. But if, and this is the last bullet, if we do one of two things, either give them an easement or transfer property, one of the two options, that not only will DCR take the design of these two trailheads up to 100%, they will also pay for 100% of construction. So we have to figure out what, how best to do this. I know there's, talked to Mr. Ferry, he's in the back there, he's, he has opinions as well, and, you know, we, we want to weigh in to see what, like, makes the most sense for Dayton. Obviously, getting it done 100% is best-case scenario, so I think at this point, it's really just a decision on, do we want to just carve out an easement? Do we want to do something else? Do we want to subdivide that and give them ownership of pieces of the, of the parcels? And that's what the next couple of slides are. So if you go to the next one, give you a little more detail of these two particular sites. So at the south, I don't know if you're familiar with that, behind Alice's Last Stop, there's actually three pieces of, of Dayton land. The one huge piece on the northeast there is Lot 23, and interesting thing is it's actually broken up into two pieces on both sides of that rail spur. You got that rail spur, and you got those two pieces of Lot 23. That's, that's actually a, it's a 25.7 acre lot. It has 52.8 feet of frontage on Somerset Avenue, and the 52.8 feet is that piece that is on the left there. The other small triangle on the bottom left there is Lot 22, 1.2 acres, and has 100 feet of frontage. And then finally, that little, little rail spur that divides Lot 23, that's, that's, that's Lot 169, and that's, that's another 1.2 acre lot. And as far as I can tell, it does have a little bit of frontage, but actually, it doesn't have any frontage because it abuts the green line, unfortunately. I don't know if you have color on yours, but if you look up on the, perfect, you do. So if you look, look on the green, that green is Commonwealth of Massachusetts property. So, so there's, there's a Commonwealth of Massachusetts property that actually leaves that whole trail bed and hits Somerset Avenue, so they actually go right to Somerset Avenue, but we want to, we want them to be able to put a trailhead in, so that's, that's what that is. So, and then the yellow box in the bottom are the, the options that I already verbalized with. Either we do, we subdivide things and carve things out and change the way we configure all this, which can, can really complicated, or we figure out an easement, which may be additionally complicated, but we can work within the town to do that, I think. So there's a couple of options. And then the next slide is, okay, what's going on in the north, up on Sandpiper. So if you look up there, this is a Lot 13, 1.02 acres with roughly 23 feet of frontage. And you can see the way it's carved out. It's large to the north, but then it cert, you know, curves down, you got that little point that touches that cul-de-sac on Sandpiper Way. And then you see on the right there, unfortunately, it's not green, but that's the Commonwealth of Massachusetts property to the east of that. So their rail bed comes all the way up, and that's actually where it ends. That plot right to the north of the Commonwealth property is private property. And then to the east, also private property. So, so same thing, same options. One thing that DCR did mention was because of topography of here, of this location, unlike the south end where we're talking about having parking areas, they don't see how that'd be, that would work out here. There's still, it's still up in the air what they can do. It might just be a straight access and then figure something else for parking, but that's, that's the two lots. So I want to pause if you have any questions or concerns.
At this time, Mr. Pacico, do you have any questions?
Yes, so who maintains the trail, the state's land? Who maintains that once it's all set up?
All state.
So if we were to give the state the land, they would maintain that land also?
They would maintain it if it was an easement as well, because it would be their-
Okay, that was-
It would be, it would be their projects.
I was going to ask that question, if it's an easement, do they still maintain it?
Yes.
Mr. Karen?
Same question I was going to have, that in, in parking. Are they going to pave parking or?
Right, they haven't given us details on the trail construction or the trailhead constructions. Right now, it's crushed, crushed stone on, behind Alice's.
Right.
I don't know if they're going to pave that or not. Same thing with the trail. They're looking at different materials, whether it's crushed stone or whether it's a 10-foot-wide asphalt trail, it's still sort of up in the air at this point. Not sure yet. But right, right now, the, the lot we have carved out behind Alice's, I think it fits four or five, five cars maximum.
What would they do for parking on Sandpiper?
Don't know. I think that's just going to be an access point. I don't have a good answer for that yet, because the idea was, it'd be great if you had this large property here, people could go down and park there, but if you've ever been up there and, and looked down there, it's, it's very steep, so it's very likely they wouldn't do anything at all. We're actually, as an aside here, the very next slide, we're talking about feasibility study that we got funded, where that's going to be one of the things we want to look at, solutions of, okay, so the DCR is putting in this two-mile trail and, you know, doing these two, these two trailheads, what now? How do we tie that into Dayton to the north so that we can connect it from off of that obscure thing on Sandpiper to something meaningful on, either onto Sandpiper or figure something out, going, going west out to 138 and figuring out maybe parking or some kind of solution to the north? Because ultimately, we'd like to make it all the way to Taunton, because Taunton is, is also doing their own trail. They have a very large project going up there, and we want to tie into that because that's part of the whole network of Taunton River Trails. So, don't, I don't really have a good answer for that on Sandpiper. On Somerset, it's a little bit easier, and same, same thing, we're looking at to the south. Okay, now, again, once they terminate there, how do we, from the town perspective, prepare for tying that into the Taunton River Trails to go all the way to Somerset? So to, to be determined.
Mr. Mullin, any questions, concerns, recommendations?
No, no, I don't have anything now. Like, I think the process is still ongoing, and I think we do, I mean, obviously, we have, like, we do, we do have options and questions we need to consider, but I think we also, like, have time, especially as the process, really as the process moves forward and continues, like, I think the meeting in June is, are going to be a really helpful meeting- is going to be a really helpful meeting to really, I'll come back, I'll do all this, I can look at where the design is and the early phases of, the design is, and then, you know, come back and have a follow-up conversation based on that. But I think Jeff, I don't want to speak for Jeff, but I think what, you know, what the Trails Committee and also the state, they wanted to get on everyone's radar, that these were the questions that, you know, like, out there at this point, which, like, in the coming months, we will, you know, want to look at and, I can look at coming up with a plan to address.
Thank you. Mr. Cavall, I do have a few questions.
Sure.
Actually, a comment before I go forward.
Okay.
We have many, many committees, even department heads, who come before us to make presentations. Your presentations are always well-prepared and outstanding.
Thank you very much.
The video, the information that you provide us. And that helps sell not only your committee, but the projects that you're advocating for. As we go forward, is there anyone on the Board of Selectmen who serves as a liaison to the Trails Committee?
So like, I do, so I do know, like, I do know, just for background, Selectmen Pacheco has, oh, you know, because Jeff did mention, he's been, he's been participating in a lot of, like, the stakeholder meetings, but there, in terms of officially, is or no?
Mr. Cavall, have you submitted multiple capital outlay requests or just for the feasibility study?
Well, the feasibility study was actually a grant we were awarded by the Taunton River Stewardship Council. We got that back in December. We did put something on the capital outlay for, down the road, for trail maintenance as just a placeholder. That's years down.
I'm going to throw this idea out, because I'm aware that there's also another issue.
Okay.
And Mr. Mullin, your input would be greatly appreciated, where we have potential of an easement in dealing with another issue that may result in legal involvement. It could be over $5,000. Would it be wise, once we determine if an easement is the way we're going to go, if a request for a capital outlay for legal expenses, so that that doesn't tax our, you know, our attorney operating budget, and we can prepare and budget and plan for that?
So, I mean, one of the things, you know, and just my recommendation, like, I think there, you know, like, as you mentioned, Chairman Hall, there are two issues here. Like, I do think one is actually separate from the other here. You know, I think if, how we go forward with the state portion of the trails, you know, I mean, in terms of an easement, you know, I mean, I would frankly expect the Commonwealth to do the legwork on those easements with the review, like, with, like, the grant of easements, with, you know, the review by, you know, our council as, you know, like, a review and approval. But I mean, I mean, again, this, this is a Commonwealth project, and I would, if we, and if the board, you know, would like to move forward, like, we're trying to figure out something with the state. I think that benefit to the state, you know, would also create, oh, you know, they would work with us to do that, along with approval by our council. But I mean, I think the other issue, I mean, I would just want to keep, you know, the state portion of this separate from the other issue out there.
No, thank you. With that being said, and you mentioned you need our help, would it be wise to form a subcommittee with the liaison from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Mullin, and we have some very talented department heads of your choosing, to form a subcommittee to work on this and to come back with a recommendation to us once the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, in regards to, one, transfer a property or an easement, two, who is going to be responsible to be the liaison with, you know, DCR, and taking care of any questions that we have about funding?
Yes.
Whether it's DCR or we're paying the bill?
So...
So we get a summary and a recommendation?
Okay.
So, again, I don't want to speak for Jeff, but I mean, I think really the structure is already in place, based on the people that have been involved and the town officials that were involved, like, in the stakeholder meeting. You know, like, I know as, I know the highway superintendent, like, has been involved as well. We would, you know, want his input. The conservation agent has been involved as well. So I mean, even, I mean, I think informally, I think informally, working together like we do, you know, like, we wouldn't have to formalize a committee to do that. We could do that organically on our own. You know, and especially, you know, I mean, Jeff, I'm thinking after, after that June update meeting, we should, you know, be in a better direction to have some, you know, to provide some recommendations at that point.
Okay.
Mr. Pacheco, would you object to being the representative of the Board of Selectmen in discussions with Mr. Cavall and Mr. Mullin to expedite this?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just, we can't vote on that tonight, but I'm willing to, you know, to do that. Also, probably the land use committee might have to get involved in this, so they can take a look at the land and decide. I know in the past when we decided to auction off some of the land, it went through them and they...
No, that makes sense. So I mean, I think have, you know, having Tom involved, Tom's the chairman of the Land Use Committee, so if there is, if there is a need to go there, he would be our link to do that.
If we could put that on the agenda for next, our next meeting, the appointment of a liaison for the Dayton Trails Committee.
Absolutely.
Yep. We have a meeting. Are you at that meeting Friday, too? It's one with Commission on Disability with the Trails of DCR.
I don't know about that.
One o'clock.
Okay. I can't make that.
I'll get that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pacheco, thank you for taking the lead on that. Thank you, Mr. Cavall.
I've got one more slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's a quick one. And I just wanted to give you an update on this. So we have mentioned the feasibility study, IFB. It's a $40,000 RFQ, so becomes an IFB because of the threshold. And as I mentioned, this was entirely funded, or being entirely funded, by a grant that we were awarded by the Taunton River Stewardship Council, so no cost to the town of Dayton residents. So that's, again, great news. And so this was, if you have the presentation version of this, this IFB is up on the Dayton procurement opportunities page, so you can see that up there. So this is out there, and it's been in the wild since 30 March of 2022. And we sent it out directly to a lot of local consultants that we talked to when we were trying to figure out a good ROM for what we should be asking for, for what this is. And as I mentioned, this, the whole intent of the feasibility study is what to do on north termination and south termination, going north to Taunton and going south to Somerset. That's like the quick two-minute version of the scope of this. But there's actually quite a bit of information in there, spent some time putting this together. So timeline is on the bottom there. So it was advertised 30 March. In 17 May, we have a public meeting with the potential offers. On 24 May, questions are due from all the, all the people putting the bids in. And then 31 May is when all the bids come in, and then the fun really begins. So that's what's going on. So, great news.
Mr. Mullin, regarding the May 17 public meeting, that must be posted. Is that correct?
So, the public, the public meeting, it's actually like a mandatory pre-bid meeting for the potential bidders. So it's a public meeting for the potential bidders. It has nothing to do with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Well, the public, it's really for the potential bidders only.
Thank you.
Okay.
Besides us getting back to this in June, is there anything timewise or any votes that you need from the Board of Selectmen based on this timeline that you presented to us?
On the IFB? No, not at this time. Mr. Ferry, you had a question? I'm sorry.
You earlier raised your hand, and I don't know if you had a question in regards...
Yeah, just some comments, very important. But it seems like you're going in great direction for the information to act on. And the Sandpiper, we have underground, kind of, drainage system underground operation. That's part of the problem of parking over there or anything going off the road. But I believe that it's just a point of entrance for bicycles coming this way. I don't believe they're planning on parking there anyways. They are planning on parking to other locations, so I recommend an easement in that location. The southern pot is at least two historic sites that we want to keep for the town, I believe. So I think we may want to entertain easement so that they also, and also a larger piece, as Jeff mentioned, that's, I believe, the largest waterfront property in town, that the town owns, to access to it.
Yeah, that goes out to that peninsula.
Right. So I don't think you want to, John just wants to get that away.
Waterfront property.
Mr. Andrew.
Just real quick, the land use committee on numerous occasions has denied selling that piece of property on the waterfront. It's been before us many times to auction off, and we have voted against that. So I would be in favor of an easement also, not selling that property. I think you find the land use committee, I can't speak to all of them, would probably say the same.
All right.
Mr. Cavall, it is...
Settled.
Mr. Cavall, it has been my experience, the short year that I've been on the board working with Mr. Ferry and Mr. Agia, that processes such as these, construction projects, large land use projects, that both Mr. Ferry and Mr. Agia's advice is well-taken by the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Mullin. So I'm sure both of them will be working closely with both of you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order, next on the agenda is public input. And before we begin, public input, I'd just like to go over a couple of rules. Public input regarding disparaging remarks toward town-appointed or hired employees will not be allowed. Any issues or complaints against said employees or board members should be addressed to Town Administrator Mullin, who also acts as the Human Resource Officer for town. The other issue, any board officials or department heads who have items that they would like to discuss, be discussed and linked, please put them on the agenda for the next meeting, rather than using public input for a lengthy discussion on said items. With that in mind, does anyone in the public here this evening have anything they would like to bring before the board? Is there anyone on Zoom who has an issue that they would like to bring before us at this time? Doesn't seem to be a response. We will then go to announcements. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes. The 13 Continental Regiment Rehoboth Minutemen Camp Event on Saturday, April 30, 2022, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Free event for all ages, sponsored by the Dayton Historical Society at the Winslow Davis House, 1217 William Street. For full disclosure, I'm a member of the 13th Continental Regiment Rehoboth Minutemen, and I'm also a member of the Dayton Historical Society. Despite that, it will still be a good event. There will be a prescription drug take-back event held on Saturday, April 30, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Dayton Police Department, 1458 Somerset Avenue. This event is a one-day collaboration between DEA and the Dayton Police Department. A reminder that open burning season is from January 15 through May 1, between 10 a.m. and 4 p.m. A $10 permit from Dayton Fire Rescue is required prior to any open burning. The Dayton Lions Club, which I'm also a member of, the Dayton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution will be held next at 8 a.m. on Saturday, May 21. I thought I, Mr. Ferry, I thought I saw on the sign, does it say the 14th? No, wasn't the food bank?
I don't think so. The date included, Saturday.
Yep. So the Dayton Lions Club Food Bank Distribution will be held next on 8 a.m. on Saturday, May 21, 2022, at Town Hall Lower Level, 979 Somerset Avenue. Rabies Vaccination Day, Saturday, May 21, 2022, from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Dayton Animal Shelter, 821 Tremont Street, $20 cash only per immunization. For more information, call the Dayton Board of Health, 774-872-0943. That's it on announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin, Town Administrator's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a few quick updates, just for the board and the public. I just wanted to give an update on the FY23 budget process. As you know, the FINCOM process, the FINCOM budget process that began last night, like, it will continue tomorrow night, and then Tuesday and Thursday of next week as well. And where we are in the budget process and the recommendations that have been made to date, like, really our fiscal position going into FY23 at this point is looking a lot, actually, like, it was like an FY, like, an FY19. So where we, so where we are financially, like, we, you know, like, in FY19, we were planning on modest local receipts. In FY20 and 21, in 2021, based on economic factors, like, we saw increases in those local receipts. But now those economic, now those economic factors and realities have come back down. So like, we've had to adjust our budget, as we have mentioned accordingly as well. As part of that as well, as I mentioned in the update, we've, like, we've had, we've had to address issues, like, with ambulance fund revenues as well, which we have proposed to do in the budget, also in the budget. I just want to update on the, on the proposed FY320, FY23 assessment from the Dayton Rehoboth Regional School District. The school committee met actually last night, and they actually have, they have another reduced, another proposed reduced assessment that was just actually hand-delivered today to our office that will actually bring, right now, or up until last night, the proposed assessment was $338,000 from FY22 going into FY23. And at this point, I, I forget the exact figure, but the proposed increase is actually, at this point, for DR, it's less than $300,000. So we will update, we will update the budget accordingly with that. And I, and I believe DR is on the schedule to come back to us to present to both the FINCOM and the Selectmen on May 3, during the FINCOM meeting as well. So the next, the next few weeks will be busy with the FINCOM process. We also have, so we'll be going through that, where the Selectmen can continue to actually weigh in and change or make recommendations. But then, but then on the 11th of May, we'll have a, we'll have a chance while we're setting the warrant to address any remaining issues with the budget as well, for the Board of Selectmen recommendations. So I just wanted to give an update on the budget, just to let everyone know, and the public know where we are on that, and how we're, and how we're anticipating to go forward. Is there any questions on that update before I move on?
I don't.
Okay.
Mr. Karen?
I also wanted to... Um, I also wanted to, uh, I also wanted to provide an update on, on the Waging Classification Study update, uh, which has been, uh, ongoing, uh, since early this winter. Uh, like we, uh, we had a Waging Classification Consultant, uh, like, um, here on the 30th of March for interviews, um, uh, with the political union employees. Uh, and based on those interviews, um, and the job analysis questionnaires, uh, that were completed, uh, by employees and approved by their department heads, uh, in early March, uh, the consultant at this point, um, uh, has been drafted updated job descriptions, uh, like for the review of department heads and employees. Um, that process is ongoing. That process began to roll out, uh, the, uh, the beginning of last week. Um, and that, um, and that pro- that process is continuing. So, uh, things are real active, uh, you know, things are really active with that process now. Um, and probably, I would imagine, in early June, um, the proposed, the proposed updated job descriptions along, uh, like along with the accompanying recommendations from the consultant will be coming, uh, will be coming before the board for your review, um, at that point as well. So I just wanted to give an update on that. So everyone was, everyone was in the same loop on that as well. Um, just moving forward, um, at, um, at the last meeting, I believe, um, I provided an update, um, that, uh, that a few weeks ago, we applied, uh, through Congressman, through Congressman Jake Ottingclass's office, uh, 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 for, uh, for what is being called a community funding project request. Uh, like and we applied, uh, like and we applied for funding, uh, through the Congressman's office, uh, uh, for construction funding to replace, uh, the Pleasant Street Bridge at Murray Cove. Um, and so, so I believe that happened around the first part of April. Uh, then on Friday of last week, we heard, uh, we heard from the Congressman's office, uh, that, uh, that he was interested in helping, in helping us advance the funding for the project. And, um, in, um, and the Congressman's office asked, uh, for like a lot of backup and, uh, for a lot of backup information, letters of support, uh, by yesterday at 12:00 noon. So we essentially had the weekend and all day Monday, half day Tuesday to pull everything together. Uh, but I'm very pleased to say that we did. I want to thank Tom Ferry. Um, I also want to thank our consultant. Um, I also want to thank our consultant, the Beta Group, uh, who we engaged, I believe, in early January, uh, to, uh, to, to help us do the design work, um, uh, for the bridge, uh, with the $150,000 approved, um, at the special town meeting as well. Uh, but I'm pleased to say that we have letters of support, uh, that we received from Rep. Padad. Uh, like we, uh, we have, uh, we have a letter of support, uh, uh, from the Region Five Director, from the Region Five Director at Mass DOT, uh, which is very helpful. Uh, we, uh, we have a letter, uh, we have a letter from Serpent, uh, that we received in support of this as well. Uh, like and we received a letter, uh, we received a letter from the Trails, uh, like we received a letter from, uh, we received a letter from Jeff Cavalllo as a Trails, um, as a Trails Chairman, based on the fact that the Trail link runs through Pleasant Street as well. Uh, so we put together, uh, like a really comprehensive package. Um, and so we're, uh, we're cautiously optimistic, uh, that, uh, you know, that our request will continue advancing, uh, through the process, but it's really exciting. So I just wanted to give that update. Uh, uh, like on a very, on a very similar note, uh, the funding from the bipartisan infrastructure law, uh, that was approved by Congress, I think the end of last year now, uh, uh, we, uh, like we, we, Selectman Pacheco and I, um, had a meeting about four weeks ago now with, uh, with Congressman Ottingclass about the implementation of the law. Uh, and Serpent, um, sent a, uh, sent a, sent around a community survey, uh, last week, last week to the member communities asking how they could help. Uh, so we'll, uh, so we'll be completing that survey, uh, like, oh, you know, like and we'll get, and we'll be getting back to Serpent as well. So as the implementation of the law goes forward, oh, you know, and as, oh, and I, and as all these fund, and as, and as these federal, these federal funding opportunities, uh, really come to fruition, uh, you hope, hopefully we have the ability to take advantage of them. Uh, and we'll be working to really do just that, um, uh, in the next few months and years as well. So that's all I have in my report, Mr. Chairman, this week.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Karen. Mr. Ferry, um, thank you for your efforts with this. Do you have any comment or questions or requests of the Board of Selectmen in regards to this bridge project?
This is a very warm project. I, I appreciate all the support that we have for the construction project. One small minor complaint. You might have a little bit too much fun doing this.
That's what I do.
So how do you define fun?
I have found this, I have found this to be very exciting time. Many people have looked upon the problems we face as obstacles and difficult times. I see it as great opportunities. And one of the things that I've seen is more and more people jumping on board to help us to solve those problems.
Yes, and, and the other real cool attribute to this is the recognition from the state level and the federal level. They know where the town attorney is on this.
Yes. Thank you. In regards to the bridge, timeline, how many years before we're in real trouble? One, two?
No, um, that's a loaded question because a lot of hidden features you can't see.
Okay.
This, the cement is deteriorating quickly with the soft burn. The integrity of the steel is decaying and you can't see that type of decay. So that's one of the reasons why it's down to 7:21 at this time.
But to reassure the public, you, uh, in working with the state, are keeping an eye on it and testing it to make sure that it is safe?
The state is there annually, both underwater and above water. Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, all business review, discuss, and act budget review?
I'm just gonna pull up the budget, Mr. Chairman, so we have that in front of us at this point. Um, there are a number of budgets, as you know, on, um, to this week's agenda for a review by the board, beginning with the Harbor Master, uh, and following up on the conversation that we had at, at the last meeting and then at, uh, the Selectmen's meeting last month as well. Just gonna pull that budget up. Um, and we do have our town attorney on Zoom as well. Sorry, like the Nancy Goulard is, you know what I mean, so I have to look at a cheat sheet that she provided me. $295, I'm sorry. Okay. And, um, so, uh, so like if you recall, if you recall, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, two weeks ago, we, uh, like we had a discussion about, uh, uh, the Harbor Master budget and, uh, like in the stipend question, uh, that actually led to a more comprehensive discussion about, uh, the Harbor Master budget. Uh, so like we, uh, like we do have the Harbor Master and the Chief of Police here tonight to answer, uh, actually any follow-up questions, uh, that the board has as a result of the conversation, um, that was had two weeks ago and then last night with the FINCOM as well.
At this time, before I ask either the gentleman, um, Mr. Marino, or Mr. Chief McDonald to come up, are there any questions from members of the board?
Not at this time, ma'am.
Mr. Kim.
About the budget?
Uh, the Harbor Master budget, that is correct.
Um, I'm not gonna get into the stipend because I know you guys want to talk about that. But how many assistant Harbor Masters are there?
Thank you very much. There are currently two assistants.
Two assistants? In, what do, what exactly do they do that you need two?
Actually, we need three.
You need three?
Yeah. We had three, but one, our third had to step aside for medical reasons. Well, there's a lot of work that we do on the water. One, starting with getting the boat ready in the spring. We don't farm that out to somebody and then pay for it. We do it ourselves. Uh, we launch all the no-wake buoys every spring. We record all tho- each one of those no-wake buoys with the Coast Guard. In the fall, we do all that in reverse. In the, in, in the, in between time, we're on the water patrolling. And we choose to go out when we can to per shift, so that we're not out there alone doing law enforcement by ourselves on the water unarmed. One person, the nearest thing we have to safety is a radio to the police station. So we have two people going out on patrols at a time when, whenever we can. That's it.
Does this budget reflect the third person or is it just for two?
We have the money in for the third person when I find that individual. I'm looking for an individual who actually lives on the water, down in that area, who has quick and immediate access to the boat. Uh, we've, we've had others who have lived, uh, in other parts of town, but, you know, in an emergency call, it can be difficult to get there in time. You don't have much time on the water. You get a call, you gotta run.
How many emergency calls did you do last year? Emergency, I mean, uh?
I, I don't have my, uh, book with me to give you a number on that.
Five, 10?
Maybe, but I don't know. I, I, I couldn't give you that number.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll go back to that.
What do you constitute an emergency? If I get a call from the police department to be, from dispatch to go out, that's an emergency.
Sure.
If somebody calls me and says, "My son went out on his windsurfer and I haven't seen him for two hours," that's an emergency.
Right.
So anything on the water is an emergency.
Well, just patrolling though would be.
Patrolling is not an emergency. That's routine and customary, uh, functioning of our department.
I was here last night and we talked about, uh, painting the boat. And I know you set aside $5,000 for it. What's the other 1,700 gonna be? Because you have, your budget is 6,700.
I have, um, 1,700 for, is that equipment and maintenance?
Yes, yes.
That's what I use to spend throughout the year for whatever we need for the boat. We have to maintain the boat, you know, something.
Right, but you're already spending $5,000. So you, you still need an additional 1,700?
Yes. That's for, that's a one-time to have the bottom of the boat completely stripped of fiberglass.
And that's gonna cost us 5,000?
Probably a little bit less, I would think, because of the size of it. But I'm budgeting for 5,000 in the event that the costs that I do, that I did, do have, uh, have increased. You know, the se- the 1,700 is our projected and anticipated operating budget for, you know, for the season.
Sure.
That gets us from, from now until October and then from March or April of next year to July 1.
Okay.
And then the 2,000 additional equipment is for any unforeseen expenditures that I, that we may encounter that we just didn't plan on, you know? God forbid we blow a lower unit. We need a new propeller, which I did put on one this year. You know, we've got to have some money in there, one for our normal operating budget and two for unforeseen expenses.
Additional equipment, you said 2, uh, 1,500, but you haven't spent anything yet this year?
No, you won't. Well, I actually, I actually did today. I try not to spend any of the money, if I can help it, between July 1 and January 1, because I don't know, I'm, I'm hoping that in that first season, that first section of the fiscal year, everything is running properly, we have everything that we need, we're ready to go. And we usually are by July 1. Now, come the end of the season, things whereout break down. So when the season starts over again after January 1, that's when I purchase all that we need, whether it be new lines, throwable devices, PFDs, uh, whatever we, whatever we need. That's when I make those expenditures. I, I basically squirrel it away and don't spend it until I know we've got a, uh, a certain amount of time with a certain amount of money before the next budget cycle hits.
Or we're running out of time, right?
What's that?
Uh, so you're kind of running out of time. You've got April, May, and June.
Uh, well, I've got a bunch of expenses that I, that I'm, that are gonna be put in there, yeah. Actually, the, uh, some of these supply houses are really slow in sending in their invoices.
Right.
I mean, I've got expenses from a month ago and I still haven't received the statement from the supplier yet.
Play with their money for a little while.
Well, pretty much, you know, hang on to it as long as you want. I mean, we've got it, but, uh, it, it will definitely go. It, it goes every year.
The, um, last night when you were talking about the professional technical fees, I know you had talked about teaming up with the police chief. Do you think it's wise to do that this year, uh, if we're already spending $5,000 on, on the boat? I mean, is, is there room to say maybe we should wait a year so that we don't have such a large increase?
Um, no, because it's, uh, it actually goes right to the safety of us on the water and how we, uh, conduct ourselves on the water, how we handle situations on the water. So the sooner we can get that level of law enforcement training established and can, on a continuing basis, we're much better off for the town and for the community to have that knowledge.
How long have you been doing it?
26 years.
In, in, in your assistance?
Uh, one's been probably close to 10 and the other one, this will be his third.
And just now we're deciding to do?
Well, things have changed on the water now. I mean, if you look at the news, you read the newspaper, you watch the news, things are very different with what happens in society now. So there's, we, we've got an increased need for that type of training at this point. Uh, we wear body cameras. We have a policy with the town, uh, we developed. And again, between the body camera and the communications to dispatch on the boat, that's all we have to help us out there. So that additional training will help us, um, it, it's really, I think Lieutenant Cronin put it best, it's, it's conflict mitigation. Because when we stop people, it's not because we didn't have anything better to do.
Right.
It's because there was a reason. And for whatever reason, now people are very confrontational. As soon as they get, as soon as they see the lights on or they see us wave them down without the lights on or however we gesture to them that we would like to speak with them, uh, it can get very antagonistic. There's a lot of jet skis out now, more and more jet skis. That's a whole different type of boater.
And, and travel? What do you, what do you travel?
Uh, when I go to the Cape and the Islands meetings down in, uh, they're usually, sometimes they're in Bourne, sometimes they're in Sandwich, sometimes they're in Hyannis. I take my personal vehicle down there.
Okay.
I actually haven't been going because they've been on Zoom with COVID.
Sure.
But that's, you know, that's hopefully going away.
I guess my, um, my biggest concern is, I, I'm not convinced you need three assistants. Certainly, uh, you need one assistant. Whether you need two, um, I, I think that's a stretch. And then to add a third, uh, I, I just don't see the need for it.
Well, what happens, and they ask you, uh, if we want to go with two on a patrol for safety purposes? If we only have one and no assistance, that doesn't work. I think we have the support of our local police to do it in pairs. So, you know, having more than two people gives, that, that doesn't put two people on call every single Saturday and Sunday for the entire summer or even during the week. If, if we had three, which we have, there's a call. If, if we had three, which we have, there's a call, an immediate phone call goes to the first one. Can you make it? Gotta be on the boat five minutes. Can you be there? Yep. No? Okay, see ya. Call the next one. Now we're down there. Now we have, I mean, you're talking 500 bucks. You're not talking a lot of money.
I'm not talking a lot of money, but it's 500 bucks.
You're talking pennies.
And...
Why, why, let me ask, why do you feel adamant that shaving this out of the budget would make a difference? Okay, then you would know, then there you go.
And I go to Newport and there's one harbor master on the boat.
No.
I, I, I've stopped and talked to him many times.
How many harbor masters are there?
I don't, I don't know how many.
There's one. How many assistants do they have?
I, I don't know.
Over 15.
But it's one per boat. So if you're here in Dayton with, with very little water...
So you're saying that our responsibility, so you're saying our responsibility as a harbor master in Dayton is less than that of a harbor master in Newport?
Responsibility would be the same responsibilities, but if there's one per boat...
Now, if you look in Newport, they have more than one boat on the water at a time, in addition to the police and the fire.
You said to me you need two because they're, when they pull up, pull up, or when you pull somebody over, they're, they're a different breed today. Well, they're, they're pulling those same people over at, at least 100 times more than what happens here in Dayton.
Did you look at the harbor master down there? Did you see something different about them and us?
Other than they carry weapons?
Yeah, big difference, huge difference. I was able to carry under previous selectmen, okay? And I'm not gonna segue out of the topic, but I was authorized to carry. I am licensed to carry. I can carry in church. But I can't carry to do my law enforcement job out there. When I was able to carry, there were very few confrontational issues. But now that we go out with nothing other than a radio on your hip and a camera, the first thing people say is, "You don't have any authority. You don't know what you're doing." We're stuck. We're stranded.
So you're stranded with you have two or three people on the boat.
When there's two people, there's less of a, of a, um, an opportunity for them to start taking an intimidating stand, far less.
And, and, and just to end this, it'll never be, it's only $500. Because that $500 adds up times.
Never be, never say never. Because there's a 2% increase, hopefully someday that will come back. So...
The only thing is, I would, I would make a motion to remove one of the assistant harbor masters.
I would disagree on that because not being a harbor master, I don't feel with due respect that you have a sound understanding of what we do and what we go through on the water respectfully.
I would like to continue, no, no, excuse me. I'd like to continue this discussion before we take a vote, if that's okay. I have quite a bit to add, however, Mr. Pacheco.
Yes, I just wanna make a comment about you, your policy of having two, you and your assistant on the boat. When I was the chief probation officer at Taunton District Court, I required our probation officers to go out on twos before it was one, because it's a safety issue.
Yep.
And if something happened, I wanted another witness or whatever. And we didn't even have the body cameras that you fortunately have. So I support you 100% on going out with two. And I've also supported you in the past in having three assistants. So I don't see that as a major problem. We're talking about a $24 million budget for the town roughly. And we're talking about $500, moving $500 from your budget, which I don't think is appropriate. So I'm, I'm gonna support you. The increase in the stipends is a little different. That's a different subject, but as far as your other budget...
That comes when it, when it happens.
Yeah.
I understand that's a state of flux.
Yeah.
We don't even need to discuss that.
Yeah, so, anyway, I'm supporting your budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Marino? I have a number of questions.
Sure.
In Mr. Karen's questions last week, I have spent time meeting with you, meeting with Chief McDonald, and with Lieutenant Cronin. And based on those meetings, we've been very lucky in this town. And there are a number of safety concerns that seem to have gone by the wayside, that haven't been taken into consideration in funding or supporting this position. I am going to allow Chief McDonald to come up and express his concerns and also his recommendations, how that we can adequately support you. Because it is, from what I have heard, truly a public safety issue for the well-being of your unarmed officers who are on the water. Because of my relationship with the Taunton Police Department, including brother-in-law, who was chief of detectives, I am well aware of the drug activity in Taunton. I am also aware from following the logs in the city of Fall River that they also have a problem. I am not naive to think that the drugs don't mysteriously go from Fall River to Taunton. They either go by the highway or they go by the waterway.
Yes, sir.
And I'm well aware of this Taunton River waterway, having been on it for nearly over 50 years, traveling it by boat. I have some concerns about the safety of the officers, how it's manned. And Chief McDonald, could you come up and give us not only your recommendations, but your concerns?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, board. First, Selectman Karen does have some concerned questions. I understand that and what he's looking into. First, one of the questions he asked about, when Ron says something about, well, they wanna have training and they're starting the training, wanna start the training. And he had stated that, oh, why wasn't this done years ago, past years? Well, past years, the police department didn't oversee the harbor master. Harbor Master Marino was on his own with his two assistants he had. He didn't have to report to the police department. I believe it's been two or three years now, I don't know how many years, that it now...
Two.
Yeah, it's now under the police department. So when we got that, I sat with Ron, went over a lot of things about what I think we should do. One of my concerns were that I don't want anybody out there on, by themselves. I just can't see that right now. If he's out there by himself or one of his assistants are out there and one of them has a medical issue or something happens to him, he's got a radio, but he might not be able to talk on the radio. So, so what, what do they do? I feel that there should be two onboard at all times. We've had incidents out there where we had problems with, with, with the assistant harbor masters. And that was taken care of by myself and Lieutenant Cronin, also with Administrator Mike Mullin. And we took care of it. But I feel that there should be two onboard at all times. As far as training, we're gonna start training if we, the best we can. I know they went out there with the environmental police. We don't go out on the water, the police department. That, that's not, we can't, that's not our job to do that. We can't do anything of that. But as far as anything else, if some type of training we can give them to, when they, when they, they come across somebody on a boat with an issue, maybe we can get something like that. Right now, there is nothing out there to do that. But, but we are looking into doing it. If we can find some type of course or, or class that they can take, we will do that for them. But, but right now, there's nothing. I, I talked to Lieutenant and he said he'd been looking, 'cause he's a training officer. There's nothing right now, but if something comes up, we will do that, whatever we can do to help, to help them. And that's how I feel about it. I mean, they, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be out there by themselves. And I know the waterways out there is not a lot. I mean, I believe one side is Berkeley, one side is Dayton. Am I saying that right?
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know if Berkeley goes out there at times. I don't know that. Busiest time in the summer, you know, is, is a Friday, Saturday, Sundays, especially the weekends. I mean, I, I've driven down there all the time and I see a lot of boats out there. Yeah, it's, it's family that goes out there and, you know, gets in the boat and they travel out to Newport or wherever they're going. But sometimes you come across somebody's out there goofing off or doing whatever they wanna do and, and somebody should, should be out there. I mean, I told Ron to suggest that they should be out there more than they, they are. But he, I mean, he, he goes out there. But I told him, when you go out on the water, I don't care if it's you or your assistants, you must radio dispatch and say, "I am on the water." That way they know that they're out there. If anything happens when they're out there, you have to, you have to report it, document, anything. You, you have to have that. And once you're coming back into the dock and you, you park the boat, you're off the air, so the dispatcher knows. If there's an emergency, let's face it, you know Chief McGee and his, his department's gonna be out there. That's, that's, that's a no-brainer. He will, he will be there. And if harbor master has to go out there, he's, he's there too. So that, that's just how I feel about it. I, I just feel that it, it should have more than, than just a harbor master. I think, I think two assistants is fine. I think that's good, great. If, if, if he, if harbor master goes out there and he needs one of the assistants, he's got one. If maybe one can go and one can't, I don't know. Or maybe the two assistants can go, but, I mean, that, that's...
Well, I'm not, not to interrupt. I didn't say there shouldn't be any assistants.
No, 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 no. I agree. I, I, my thing is, we've, he's gone with himself and two assistants. I mean, he, he knows better than, than I would, what he needs out there. I, I can't, I can't say that, but he, he would know if he needs a third one. I don't know that, but, but...
He was explaining the third.
Yeah, he probably won't go on.
Otherwise, it would've been filled by them.
Chief, I do have some questions. Is there standard protocol established in regards to when an assistant harbor master, the harbor master, when he goes on the water, when he comes off the water, and when he pulls over a boat? In other words, when one of your officers goes on duty, 238, start of shift, 238, end of shift. When they pull over a car for whatever reason, your officers call in?
They, anytime they stop a car, they, they call in.
They call in. Whenever Mr. Marino or any of his people pull over a boat, do they call, do they radio into the, who do they radio into?
To dispatch.
Okay, so you, that is standard protocol?
What we'll do, just so you know, if there's a vessel that we need to pull over for whatever reason, first thing I instruct the assistants to do, and I do the same, is we do a circle around the boat before we get close enough to them where they can touch us, reach us, touch our boat, do anything. We do a circle around the boat. Get the registration number, call in, immediately call it to dispatch and ask dispatch, "Please log MS 2320 KV into the log." They now have the boat registration that we just stopped, in addition to the body camera being on. Then we process the stop. That's pretty much it for that moment between us and dispatch. We do what we have to do. When we're done, if it's an issue of citation, issue of verbal warning, issue of written warning, that happens, and then we'll radio back in. Control, this is Harbor Master Marino. I'm free.
And if he writes a citation on the water, he has to send that citation in. It doesn't come to us for us to send to court. He has to do that. And if he has to go to court and get summons, he has to go, not, not the officer.
So you're the, you're the court officer representative of Dayton?
Sitting there for hours, you know...
So, so what he does, if he writes a citation to somebody, he will give us a copy of it. So we have it on file in case we have any concerns if, if the person has an issue or, or anything comes up.
With an incident report that we generated ourselves, that we give to the chief for his knowledge or whoever in the PD is looking at that citation, just so they know.
And I, I did tell him, I, you know, we met, we've met several times. And I told him, "You, you need to make sure you report everything that goes out there, on out there." I mean, you, you don't, if something happens and one of them doesn't report it and it gets back to us, that, that, that's an issue. Just you have to document and make sure you, you report, I don't care what it is. And just make sure we, we have it.
Regarding public safety concerns, you, you've mentioned recommended, you know, staffing. You've explained protocol. Are there any other public safety concerns in regards to the harbor master or the waterways of Dayton that you would like us to consider as we prepare and approve this budget?
No, no, nothing right now. It's not going to happen.
I see this approval process is dealing with two issues. One, well, three actually, the overall budget, but staffing, staffing, and the stipend. In regards to the stipend, we've had some discussion. There is a proposed increase of 6.12%. And during our discussions last week and with FinCom, we explained that we had taken an approach, universal approach, with all stipend boards and committees, that we would go with 2%. We also spoke about last night that a request had come in for a retroactive fee. And in that particular instance, last year, the Board of Selectmen did not get the support at town meeting or with FinCom, I believe, to do that. And in being consistent with that, I can't support a retroactive increase. Regarding the 2%, it is not a cost of living increase. It is a case of the financial team sitting down and looking at what we could afford, taking into consideration all the stipend employees, taking into consideration our budget needs and some contracts that we are negotiating at this time. And based on pile of money that we had, we determined that 2% is what we could afford. Now, why now? Because Mr. Pacheco can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been four or five years since those stipend employees have received an increase. And it is certainly a small gesture and token of our appreciation for the work that people do. We also recognize the fact that the amount of time and effort that all of the stipend employees put in is above and beyond what we can pay. And we appreciate that service. But the slogan of this town has been, "A small town with a big heart." And we recognize the fact that people do a lot and go above and beyond, and they do it for love of the town, not for pay. But in the same token, I personally feel this increase is warranted to show that we recognize and appreciate the efforts of all of the town employees. Unless either of my colleagues have any further comments, Mr. Mullin?
I don't have any, no.
I, if it would be possible, I'd like to address through motion each of the two points of contention. The first being the percentage for the stipend. And then the other issue would be how many assistant harbor masters we would employ. We currently have two, so it's not a case of laying anyone off if need be. On the issue of the... On the issue of the percentage of salary increase for the harbor master and the assistant harbor master, do I have a recommendation, I mean, a, a motion and recommendation at this time?
I'll make a motion that we increase the stipend for the harbor master by 2%, which is $20, and for the three assistants, 2% also, which would be $30 increase. So for a total budget of $14,350.
Do I have a second on that motion?
No, I, I, I don't have a problem with the stipends, but I, I still don't think we need three assistants. So if we're making a motion just on the stipends, I would agree with that.
Okay. We currently have a motion without a second that would include three assistants. Do I have a second? That motion fails. The next motion that, oh, do I have another motion at this time? I would like to step down as chairman to make a motion that the position of harbor, the harbor master stipend and the assistant harbor master stipend be 2%.
Second that.
I have a motion that's been made in second. All those in favor of a 2% increase in stipend for the harbor master and the assistant harbor master, Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Hall is an aye. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the number of assistants to be employed by the Town of Dayton assistant harbor masters. Do I have a motion as to the number?
Make a motion that there be two assistants.
Mr. Pacheco? The chairman will step down and second Mr. Karen's motion. I have a motion made and seconded that the Town of Dayton will continue with two assistant harbor masters. Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
No.
Mr. Hall is an aye. So the budget will be addressed, adjusted to reflect that. We currently have two. We also have, we worked with two up to this point because of the tough economic times. And Chief McDonnell, you did say that, you know, we have used two through the year. That is an issue that we can address if the concerns warrant it. The stipend and the pay for a third one is something that if the need should happen to arise, it can be addressed through other means. But at this time, we have to make a recommendation to the FinCom. We have a meeting with them tomorrow. And this will go before the voters of the town, and they can amend it if they shall, so choose. Or the FinCom can recommend to the voters the, the third assistant. But at this time, because of tight economic times, we are going to go with the two assistants, with the 2% increase. Thank you. Mr. Mullen, will we need now to make a recommendation on this whole package for the warrant?
So, yeah, there is a recommendation for the personnel expenses at this point. That's been approved by the Board of Selectmen, but we do need a recommendation on the, on the harbor master expense budget as well. Right now, the expense budget is proposed at $11,800, and we will need a recommendation on that.
Now, that number reflects the 2% and the cut of the assistant, one assistant?
So, so no, that doesn't reflect any of that. That's in the personnel budget, like up above. And the personnel budget includes, based on the vote, because as I understood, there were separate votes, uh, to get to the personnel budget, but now we do need a vote from the Selectmen on the expense, on the expense portion of the budget, which is not personnel. So this lower part right here, and that, and that subtotals the current recommendation before the board to $11,800.
And that would be for the personal, personnel expense? Or that would be the general expenses?
The general expenses.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve 11,000, that we recommend $11,800 for the personal expense, general expense for the harbor master.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Selectmen Hall is an aye. Motion passes. Now, we will need to make a motion on our recommendation for the warrant, correct? For the total?
The, so the total is already inherent, so based on the personnel and expenses combined, so we can actually use, use a total of that number combined to get a Board of Selectmen recommendation on the warrant. I like understanding that the whole warrant and the text of the warrant, I will then come back to the Board of Selectmen for approval as well.
Okay. So at this point in time, we need, need not take any further action, is that correct?
Yes, everything is good.
Mr. Marino?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief.
Thanks, Board. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aye, next on the agenda is council on aging.
Bring the budget up. So when we do, we do have Executive Director Powell, members of the Council on Aging, Board of Directors here. I, I have to say, I was, I, so I've, I have already been critiqued today of, of talking too much by Mr. Ferry on the Council on Aging primetime budget. So at this point, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Powell, so she can talk, because I think people like hearing her more than me.
Well, as someone who has to make a decision, I'd like to hear from all parties. Thank you. Yes, please, Ms. Powell.
Good evening. Please excuse my nervousness. First, I'd like to thank the Board and the townspeople for their patience in the transition of the Council on Aging that is occurring. I'd also like to thank Mr. Mullen, the, and the town accountant, and the Board, my Board, for all the help and the guidance that they are giving me. And I will try to answer any question that I believe I have the answer to, and if I don't, I'm going to turn it over to either Mr. Ferry or Mr. Mullen, who has, who have been working very hard in helping reconstruct this department. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I, having sat through the FinCom meeting last night, I don't have any questions. I know that if you would give us a budget presentation and an explanation in general terms of, of your request, in specifically, I, I think the big question would be, there is a 58% increase in professional and technical, and if you could explain that in your presentation, it would be appreciated.
So prior to the COVID, we did not hold exercise classes during the summer months, because usually a lot of the people move, go away to Florida. A lot of Daytonians go to Florida. And Alice, the prior director, there didn't seem that there were many people attended, so we would not hold it during the months of the summer. But during COVID, whereas we were all locked down in our homes, we found it best to try to bring the people out of their homes, so we held it out through the summer outdoors here in the pavilion. And that's what, and we went, we didn't account for that prior, under the budget prior to this one. So we didn't put in for it, so we ran short on it. That's how that occurred.
Last night, Mr. Mullen quite eloquently explained the changes that have come about in merging Council on Aging and primetime. And I'm not sure how many people that are listening this evening, listened to the presentation last night at FinCom. Could you highlight those changes?
So, in order to utilize the primetime building to its full potential, not just for the primetime attendees, but also for the Town, Town of Dayton residents who don't attend primetime, we would like to just open up primetime three days a week where we can utilize the staff to a better potential, instead of having them come in split shifts in, in five days, have them all work longer days during the day, because we do need a lot of staffing to take care of 20 people during the day. And so we would only do that on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays would be, primetime would be considered the daycare. And then on Mondays and Fridays, we would like you to utilize those, primetime on those days for, to hold programs for anyone who's not attending primetime, for exercise classes, presentation, card games, a number of things that I presented to Mr. Mullen.
In regards to primetime, have you queried the enrollees as to how they feel about only having it three days a week?
No, we have not. We did, we did not have many that attended five days a week. They were all scattered. Maybe the, maybe we had a couple of people who attended four days a week, but most of them attended one, two, or three days a week. We didn't really, at this, in quite a few years, we haven't had anybody who could, who would, who would attend five days a week.
Will you be opening the program up to people from other communities?
Yes, we will. Always prim, with primetime, Daytonians, as I call them, have preference. I do have a number here of how many people we have on our roster and on our waiting list. There are 11 clients currently enrolled at primetime, which six of them are Dayton residents. We have 33 potential clients on the waiting list, which 11 of them are Dayton residents. And of course, if we do open up, those 11 residents, we will get called in first.
In working with your board members, what new programs are you planning to institute at primetime and in general activities?
Well, I would like to bring the Tai Chi class here to primetime and the exercise class, but also, we'd like to continue to hold the yoga class at Lincoln Village Housing for the Elderly, because if we do move the COA here, we don't want to abandon those people. So, and they already have a resident coordinator who goes there weekly on Tuesdays, who has helped them tremendously through, through the COVID and continues to do so, and she also provides activities for them. And I would be holding office hours there on a Wednesday from 8:00 AM till 3:00 PM with, that the Council on Aging wouldn't abandon those that don't drive, you know, that we would be there for them. I'm sorry, what was the?
No, no, that, the programs you explained quite nicely.
Oh, the programs. So our fitness class, we would also like to offer Daytonians that would, that might not attend lunches at primetime on regular primetime days, daycare days, we would like to offer them lunches and breakfasts on Mondays and Fridays. Even one of my special ones would like to, would be a veterans, veterans breakfast once a month. We would also, we're going to implement again card games, which we used to have years ago, and then there was a decline in interest, but there's been a lot of phone calls who, of people who would like to start card games again. And there's many things, I have lists and lists of things in my brain, there's too many to, we'll continue to provide the presentations that we always have, elder law presentations, things like that, and many others. I've also been working on a few new grants, and there's a, a fitness campaign program that's out there that, which I've spoken to Mr. Ferry about, and I hope to get in touch with the person who's, I have gotten in touch, now I need to have a meeting with them to, to maybe go forth and, and create a state-of-the-art exercise, I don't, platform, I believe it's called, somewhere in Dayton, I don't know yet. So that's one of my things that I would like to do, that I'm working on in the background.
I'm excited, and I wish you the best.
Thank you so much.
And I, I want you to know, there was a question that I asked of Mr. Mullen's financial advisory team, and he has a people, has a group of individuals, Ms. Vining is one of them. And the question I asked that group, is this program a viable program that has a future? And their answer was what, all I needed to hear, and the answer was yes. Is their budget tight? And where the, of the Board of Selectmen's support? And the answer to that question was yes. So you do have my support.
Thank you.
Before we go on, Mr. Pacheco, do you have any questions from his?
No, she answered everything that you asked tonight, and she did a fantastic job last night explaining to FinCom what you planned.
Mr. Karen, do you have any questions?
Yes, if you don't mind. Great job last night, too.
Thank you.
Very impressive. My, two questions are, $1,000 for overtime. Why would you budget $1,000 for overtime when for three years we haven't spent anything?
I, I don't have an answer to that.
Okay.
Because I'm new, I don't have an answer to that. I think that was just a backup. We never, we're allowed to work overtime anyway. We used to just take comp time, so I, I, I don't have an answer to that.
All right.
Mr. Ferry, would you wish to answer that, or I care?
I believe it's a mechanism, so it's in place, because a lot of times the client will get picked up in a timely fashion, and they have for hours. Do you rule through the comp time situation? This gives a mechanism to make sure I do bill it to the taxpayer.
But does it have to be $1,000 when we haven't spent any in three years?
No, you, you can make a recommendation, absolutely. It's just a time to do it.
And then my next question is, you have additional equipment to count, number 5850, and you have a computer in parentheses, are you buying a computer?
Actually, I am, because within a week of taking this job, my computer crashed. So I, there's actually a computer on order at the mo, as we speak, and I'm waiting for a computer.
So won't that come in, in this fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
So why are we budgeting $1,000 for next year?
So, I'm not sure when the, I know that the, the computer that I am using is a little outdated, has no programs that I need.
I agree.
So I would, what we used to normally do up till now is we would purchase a computer, we would rotate, there's four computers within the Council on Aging to a primetime, to the COA, and we would rotate years, so every four years, somebody would get a newer computer, an updated computer.
And I have no issues with that. You need the computer. I guess my question is, if you've ordered one, that, that computer's going to come in now, and we're going to pay that bill now, why are we budgeting another one for next year?
So, we don't know what's, what could happen to the other three that we have, because they all, four years, they get, you know, refurbished every four years. I'm sorry, please.
So, yeah, like, so, yeah, like, I think, Bella, what, so what you've been saying as well, like, is the back, the backup computer that you're using now after your computer has crashed, is still in, in old and integrated? is still an old and integrated, a computer that needs to be replaced in the first place?
Correct. As a matter of fact, we looked at the dates, because we have dates in the backup room, and that is the next one that is due to be, actually, mine was the next one to be replaced. And then following mine would be that one.
I guess it doesn't answer my question. I, I still don't know why we, go ahead.
Mr. Ferry?
If also, will you put, because it continues to rotation? We plan that to replace a computer a year, each year. So none was replaced last year or this year, hers crashed. So we're scheduled to replace one of the four this next fiscal year.
So there's four use for council on aging?
Between council days and primetime, these four. So we skipped, at least a year, and one schedule we have to replace next fiscal year.
And may I add a little something? Also, the SHINE program has gone through some modifications, and their memo of agreement has come through, which a lot of council on agings are not agreeing to, because they're mandating.
No, this, I've had many people ask for that program.
They're actually mandating, not on top of the training, but they're mandating that we supply a computer, a laptop, to whoever the SHINE counselor is, if we have a volunteer or hire one, or, or, so I don't, you know, those are things that have to be worked out in the near future, I hope. So we might need to buy a little laptop to, for somebody to do SHINE counseling in a private area, because SHINE, SHINE should be done in a private area in both of our offices, two, two people in the same office. So that's not a private area, and we can't take our, our big computers to another room. We would need a laptop, so we'd be buying a laptop for that.
On the issue of overtime, I would like to take a look at that before we vote. First of all, it's my understanding that the previous two years, primetime was closed for quite a long time because of COVID-19. So I would imagine during that two-year period, when you were closed, you couldn't use your overtime. When we take a look at overtime, your program will be open in the course of a fiscal year, how many days?
I'm sorry, I don't have.
180?
I don't have that number.
Two, I think, the working days for next year is around 250-ish?
250 days. So when we look at 250 days, do you have a minimum agreement with your staff in regards to overtime, if someone is late and they have to stay to cover until that person gets picked up?
So usually, the regular non-benefited employees would go home at 3 o'clock. The person who would stay behind would be the assistant program manager, which is a union position, so I'm assuming, you know, that would be the only person that.
And that would be overtime?
That would be considered overtime.
And overtime rate would be?
Time and a half, I believe.
Time and a half, Mr. Mullen, would you?
Not sure what her rate is.
Yeah, yeah, it is, yes, it, yes, it is time and a half, yes.
Okay. So when we take a look at 250 days with potential that you could have close to 200 days where someone is late, and we take a look, do you provide training for yourself and your staff, well, for your staff? Because they're hourly paid employees, correct?
Correct.
Do you provide training for them?
Many, in which forms? We, we provide CPR, we provide?
Training either in-house?
Yes, we do.
Outside?
Yes, we do.
Recommended training?
Yes.
And that training would be, would any of that training be above their regular hours of employment?
Yes.
And that employment and those hours would put them in the overtime range?
Correct.
And how many people do you have on staff?
Altogether, at this point in time, well, right now, there's only two of us on staff. But once we have fully operated, there'll be four, five, six, seven of us.
So you'll have seven people on staff, and they're all paid an hourly rate? Is that correct?
Correct.
And all of those people are bound by the overtime law?
Well, I'm not sure about the primetimers, no, the part timers, the 15, the 19 and a half hours are non-benefited.
Okay.
And there's four of those.
How many full timers would you have?
Three.
So you have three.
Two, I'm sorry, I'm counting myself twice. So there's a director, and she, there's, oh, I'm confused now. I don't know how many there are now.
I'm breaking it down.
Because I'm, I'm like two different people right now, one, two, three, there's three.
Will be three, yep.
There'll be three.
I'm breaking it down. So that the people listening and the people here can get an understanding that $1,000 on overtime is not a lot of money. You know, you take a look at 250 hours and multiply that by, or even 200 hours and multiply that by the overtime rate.
It's a nice.
We're talking 30 times 200.
It's a nice question to have.
Just doing the numbers off the top of my head, we're at 600, $700. So to, to question whether $1,000 is exorbitant, I have trouble to, to think that is exorbitant. Is it equitable? I would be interested to hear what Mr. Ferry, from his many years of experience on the council on aging, feels about that as the chairman of counseling on aging. From your experiences working with Ms. Souza, Alice.
Alice and Sheila, Sheila in particular, would be the, Sheila's position would be the one in interest.
Okay.
And that person is retiring. So historically, I believe she took all the comp time, not the overtime.
Correct.
But we need to have a mechanism in place if they chose the overtime with the new person coming. So that, that's the only thing, so I can give an act. I do, I do agree with Mr. Cameron, we should look at that number. Maybe it doesn't need to be a dollar, maybe 600, 500, 600? So you still have a mechanism?
Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
If we picked 500, and we needed to revisit it, because?
We were seeing a trend.
Would we be in a position, help?
Yes.
To do a transfer?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions before I ask for a recommendation?
Well, the overtime is my only concern, and it's just the overtime hours. It's the overtime dollar, it's not the full salary, it's not the full hourly rate, plus overtime that goes into the overtime line, it would just be the overtime dollar.
Right. No, no, we're going, I'm hoping very shortly to look specifically at that line item and ask for a recommendation, and we'll vote on that line item. And then, once we have that line item, we will recalculate and vote on the overall budget. Unless I have any further questions regarding the budget? We've had some discussion in regards to the overtime salary, or the overtime funding, and I will entertain a motion for an amendment to what is requested.
Make a motion that we amend it to $500 from $1,000.
Do I have a second on the motion? Chairman will step down, and he will second that motion. All those in favor of the overtime line item being budgeted at $500? Mr. Cameron?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
No.
Mr. Hall is an aye. Mr. Mullen, could you recalculate the budget of?
Yeah, yeah, Jen, now, can you update that accordingly? The other rows there? Please? And then the expenses as well, so we have a bottom line. So, so with that amendment, Mr. Chairman, amendments to the board, that takes the council on aging department total for a grand total of $115,662.
We would need to make a motion to?
Yes.
Approve? At this time, I will accept a motion for the amended budget account number 541, council on aging, for the sum of $115,442. I'm sorry.
662 dollars.
662 dollars.
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
No, but my, my question is, if we're only reducing the budget by 500, how do we get to that figure when the original figure was 122,000?
The, the original, the original figure, I like, I'm sorry, so the original figure was 116,000. So the 116,000 minus 116, 162, less the $500, brings us to 115,662.
The only question I have is on our?
Is there an issue?
On our worksheet, we have 122,488.
Oh, this is right. The, the, still, I apologize. The, the other difference is the offset from when these were first printed to the salary for the executive director being updated based on the contractual, it's still based on the contract. So, because those, like in the budget books, because the budgets hadn't been acted on yet, the figures all stayed the same throughout, like, at the beginning of this week, we updated that salary, but the pages didn't change.
Okay. So the number that is here is the correct number?
Yes, the 115,662.
Do I have a second? Chairman Hall will step down to second that motion. All those in favor? Mr. Cameron? Mr. Pacheco?
No.
Mr. Hall is an aye. Add to primetime. The budget here is for $92,763.41. Are there any questions in regards to the primetime budget?
Again, I would say the overtime.
I'm a little confused in regards to the overtime. It's, council on aging had a request for $1,000, and primetime also a request for $1,000. Why is it listed twice? And obviously, we've reduced the council on aging, but?
So the, so the council on aging, like, has, has, the council on aging budget has always included the personnel expenses for the director and the, hold on a sec, let me just speak intelligently.
The administrative assistant?
Like in the, like in the assistant, so Bella's, the old Bella's, the old Bella's position. I like, that was all, so that, so the $1,000, the, the former $1,000 overtime line in the council on aging budget, I really, I really only reflected like an over, an overtime potential allotment of $1,000 for one employee. The primetime budget, it, like, it has an overtime additional hours budget, like, for the, I'll, I'll, for two union employees, I like, and also, and also the potential for additional hours, I like, for part-time employees as well. I like, so like, if we, the part-time employees that we actually have, that we have at primetime as well, we have the ability to fund additional hours either for them, or the two union employees that are reflected in the primetime budget.
Now, my understanding, didn't we combine these two?
So, so we combined these two, but they are still two separate budgets, just like, as an example, Highway and Stormwater, Treasurer and Collector, oh, you, or the Selectman and Town Administrator, I mean, it's one of the examples we do, oh, you know, where we do have departments that are split up over two budgets.
Now, the assistant manager of counseling aging and primetime, that's the same person, correct? Or are they two separate people?
They're two separate people. So we have, under the primetime budget, the, the assistant manager in the primetime budget, um, uh, is the position that Sheila currently holds.
And that assistant would be managing both counseling on aging and primetime?
No, the primetime assistant manager has just, historically, just been in charge, or the assistant manager to primetime alone, and their responsibilities has not, have not actually transferred into the primetime. No, sorry, council on aging.
Now, these are salaried positions?
They are union si-
Oh, okay.
They're union positions, based on the grade schedule and the CBA.
Mr. Ferry?
This one does show historic use back to 1990, 19.
2019.
Yeah, we'll go that one.
Okay.
That was only 80 bucks, 2020, 202 bucks, and after that COVID happened during that time.
So, so if I can ask a question, do you think that that figure could be reduced?
Will it be used most?
Reduced, reduced. Should we?
Yes, I, I do think you should leave it down below.
Just in case.
And what would, what would your recommendation be?
I'm sorry, I can't interrupt you. My own, my only hesitation would be, not all of them would be contractors, but union members, so they don't have the opportunity for comp time.
No.
That's why you definitely don't want to do that.
Yes.
The one thing I would caution in regards to this, and we just cut one, overtime, is to have the ability, if need be, to do a line transfer from one to the other. Is that something we should take into consideration?
It's considerable, and it's often a first, and it's not something that the Finance Committee, if we want to entertain funding, like in the fall, they don't like that. they don't like to entertain that in a fall meeting. But the transfer, if we could say that, it may be for us a start.
So a line item would be nice and clean, we could do it as a Board of Selectmen, if they were short, we, you know, five hundred?
At the end of next fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, thinking ahead?
Yes.
In case. And I, and I mentioned that if we are going to reduce this overtime budget, that we also take that into consideration. You know, we don't want to cut ourselves too short, so we run into a very difficult situation at a town meeting, or, um, getting FinCom's support and approval. I'd like to have some flexibility in case something happens. So, um, are there any further discussions in regards to the primetime budget? Are we satisfied with the overtime allotment as expressed by the TA's recommendation?
So you're going to use it as a catch-all for Council on Aging and primetime?
It has.
I think that would be wise. But again, that's a board decision, that's not totally my decision. You're fine, okay. Mr. Pacheco, do you have any further questions?
No, I don't.
Uh, at this time, I will entertain a motion, account number five forty-two, primetime. Recommended amount is ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents.
I make that motion.
Mr. Pacheco?
I'll second it. That figure is correct, just one second.
I promise you.
Thank you. Mr. Karen? We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
No, it's been seconded. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
I came in freezing and now I'm.
Okay, Selectmen's report. Mr. Curran, um, Mr. Karen, I'm sorry, do you have any?
No.
I don't have any.
I do have one announcement. The Community Preservation Committee has a at-large vacancy. They are, have posted it. They are hoping to have an applicant selected by the end of May for our May meeting, second meeting in May, to vote on acceptance of, or to fill that vacancy. At this time, anyone who is interested in serving on CPC as an at-large member should submit a resume and a cover letter to Mrs. Karen Brady in the Board of Selectmen's office, and they will be accepting applications until May fourth at four thirty PM. At that time, those applications will be forwarded to CPC. They will conduct interviews, and they will submit a recommendation for a final vote by the Board of Selectmen. Are there any further questions? New business, review, discuss, and act proposed annual town meeting articles for approval on the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we know, the annual town meeting warrant closed on April thirteenth. I sense, and even before, and even before then, Ms. Brady, um, I'm, and I want to thank her, she's been very hard at work, uh, putting all, all the articles, all the proposals into the correct form. And what you see this evening is a draft list of all the, of all the proposed warrant articles we have at the moment. Like, you'll see that in total, there, like, as of right now, there are a total of forty-one articles that have been proposed. One, um, I was actu-, uh, one so far was inadvertently included. So, uh, also, like, it looks like when all of a sudden done, we'll have between thirty-nine and forty articles proposed for the annual town meeting warrant. As I mentioned, like, a lot, like, a lot of the language on the articles is still being, like, is still being finalized and drafted. We hope to, uh, we hope to finish that, uh, very shortly, and then, and then we'll share with, with the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, and also with Town Council, uh, so they can begin their review, uh, on the articles as as to the legal, as to the legal sufficiency of each article. But just very generally speaking, um, like, articles, uh, one through fourteen, they are standard annual town meeting, so warrant articles, uh, you'll see, uh, that, uh, you'll see that we have prior year unpaid bills from FY twenty-one that we have to take care of. Article, Article four will be the town operating budget, uh, which we, uh, is still in that process. And then, uh, the typical housekeeping articles that we have, uh, that allow us to operate and do the work that the town does throughout the fiscal year. You will mention that article, I'm sorry, you will see that Article ten was, um, an article that was inadvertently included, but we're funding the debt, we're funding the debt service for the police station in the operating budget. So as I mentioned, that was inadvertently included. Uh, like, we're, um, uh, we're, um, in the, uh, like, in, uh, like, in the more final listing that will, uh, that, that will be taken out. Uh, so that takes us generally through Articles one through fourteen. Article, um, there's, uh, there's four articles from fifteen to eighteen that deal with the recommendations that, um, have been made by the, by the Community Preservation Committee to date. All those, uh, all those articles are in, um, and they're in form, and everything is, uh, good to go there. The articles, uh, from, uh, the proposed articles from nineteen through twenty, uh, twenty-nine generally, those, uh, those include, uh, those include articles that, um, have come about based on recommendations that have been made by the Capital Lake Committee, um, for FY twenty-three. And, and as we go forward through the remainder of the FinCom process, I like, I like, and all this, and also the Selectmen's process, those will be further reviewed, uh, in the coming two weeks. The-
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think Article twenty-four and twenty-five, those figures ought to be reversed.
Oh, yes, you're right.
Thank you, good catch.
Thank you, thank you very much. Just continue along, thank you, Mr. Pacheco. You will see that we, um, uh, we have, uh, like, we have Articles thirty and thirty-one, dealing with the library issues that are out there right now, um, and we hope to, um, like, and we hope to continue moving our processes along to deal with those issues. Article thirty-two is also based on the, the proposed warrant article that came from the DR School Committee, for the feasibility, and building and property needs analysis study from the, from the school district as well. The, uh, the remaining articles, currently thirty-three through forty-one, uh, they are the non-monetary articles that have been proposed. You will notice that we have been working with the Department of Revenue to propose, uh, to propose an article related to the dedicated use of marijuana revenue, um, that, uh, uh, that we believe will be helpful in terms of dedicating, uh, like, in, uh, like, in coming up with a plan for, uh, the anticipated marijuana revenue, uh, based on the, the soon-to-be-open one connection on William Street, um, and then with the hope and aim, uh, you know, like, a more, like, a more marijuana establishment as well, as well. There, and we have, as I mentioned, the, the Pleasant Street Bridge project ongoing. There's, um, there's an issue that has actually been brought to our attention, uh, first by Mrs. Gulat, but also through the existing condition survey, uh, Pleasant Street, and what we've heard from, uh, like, our engineering and design consultant, is that the, uh, the, uh, the state may have, the state may have discontinued Pleasant Street in the late nineteen twenties, um, but we don't believe there's any, uh, there's ever been anything in the affirmative for the town to accept Pleasant Street, so we want to have that in place as we go forward with this process. Uh, we do, as a board, um, as a board had, um, as a board has, um, has discussed in, in prior meetings, we do have a warrant article increase in the senior tax exemption, um, from seven hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand dollars per year. So like, again, uh, like, uh, we've been going, uh, we've been going back and forth, finalizing languages soon, um, as we do, uh, you know, have a, uh, you know, have a draft that we believe is sufficient for council. Uh, like, we will, we'll send it out to the board as well. Uh, again, and as we go forward, we will, um, as, as I mentioned, be discussing these articles and the funding and the recommendations, with the FinCom, uh, but also with, um, but also at the Board of Selectmen meeting on, um, on May eleventh as well. So I just wanted to give you, so the board and the public an overview of what, uh, you know, did come in, before the close of business on April thirteenth.
Mr. Pacheco?
No.
Mr. Karen?
No, I, I guess a quick question. The, um, oh, never mind, I'm sorry. Okay, no, no questions.
I'm a little, in regards to thirty-three to forty-one, we, we will put these on the agenda for further discussions, am I correct?
So I'm sorry, what numbers?
Thirty-three to forty-one.
Thirty-three to forty-one, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Will we be revisiting these to give recommendations, favorable recommendations or non-viable?
Yeah, yes, uh, yes, and a lot of the recommendations here will also come jointly from the Planning Board as well. There, uh, there are a number of zoning articles, uh, included in here, uh, that have been written and proposed by the Planning Board, and there will be a Planning Board hearing as well.
Now, I noticed on the agenda it says, "Review, discuss, and act."
Yes.
Do we, we have to vote on these?
No, like, we have to review, discuss, and act, uh, so as an all-encompassing anticipation for the board to be able, if they wanted to take a vote on, on, on any given issue at any given time. The board has the ability to do that, but at this point, I wouldn't, oh, you know, I mean, if you could just really
Review.
Take under advisement? Uh, you, that would be fine, as we move forward and continue finalizing this.
Do we need to take a vote to take it under advisement, or just no action?
Yeah, 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 no action, and we can actually just treat this as an update, that's fine with me as well.
Before I close the discussion in regards to this, Mr. Ferry, you had a question, or you were trying to get my attention?
I was fearful that you were going to do each article independently, and I was going to ask you to entertain a paper next day on the agenda for us. But you guys move it very long.
Yes, we're not going to deal with that tonight. You're very welcome. Next item on the agenda.
I do have a question about this. So when will the articles be complete?
Yep.
And when we make our, the board makes the recommendations on different articles?
Yes.
When do the warrants actually get printed so that can be put in any warrant articles that the board have been recommending or don't recommend?
So that was, uh, so, uh, thank you, that's actually a really a good question, because Ms. Br-, uh, because Ms. Brady, I, I like, actually, I just actually just corrected me, and I apologize. Uh, so right, uh, so right now, if we could have uh, so right, uh, so, uh, so right now, if there could, so right now, if there could be a consideration to include the articles that have pre-, that have presently, that have presently been, oh, you know, like, actually, like, outlined and described on the warrant dat- uh, on the warrant? Uh, so we could start the review process with, so we could start the review process with council, uh, and then come back, uh, on the eleventh of May for the Board of Selectmen's recommendation.
So you need a vote to move these forward to legal council?
Yes.
But not for our final approval?
Exactly, I'm sorry about that.
No problem. I, I, I understand.
And I apologize.
Well, I will entertain a motion to move the warrants for review to Town Council?
Also move, uh, taking out Article ten, is that correct?
Yes, we're taking out Article ten.
Any corrections on twenty-four and twenty-five?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
So, twenty, yes. Article twenty-four will be sixty-four thousand, and seal coding will be five thousand. Mr. Pacheco, do I have a motion?
I, I so moved that mo-, that motion, we need a second.
Second.
Motion's been made and second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Selectman Hall is an aye. We will move these to, onto Town Council for their review.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion on that, Mr. Chairman.
Next, uh, review, discuss, and act, recommendation to appoint Sewer Department Senior Clerk Elizabeth Marrera. Do we have anyone from the Sewer Department to speak on this motion?
We do have a letter.
Yes.
Uh, so we have a letter, we have Sewer Commissioner Ferry, and we, and we also have Ms. Marrera in attendance this evening as well as.
Mr. Ferry, could, would you kindly come to the podium and speak on this?
I don't have a letter, would you?
Oh, no, I have it, I, I, I have it. Thank you, thank you very much. Please be advised that Elizabeth Marrera has been offered and accepted the position of Senior Clerk in the Sewer Department Office. The Board of Sewer Commissioners voted to hire Ms. Marrera at their meeting four twenty-five, twenty-two. She will be working twenty hours per week. In regards to Ms. Marrera, um, her experience and what process were used in, in making this appointment? Was it by union seniority, or was there interviews, or what was the process?
So it was advertised in-house first and advertised. It was narrowed down to the point where I was involved, it was narrowed down to two applicants, and the whole Board of Commissioners did their final two interviews, and Elizabeth came out on top last night.
Thank you, are there any questions from the board?
So she's already been hired, we, we would just be acknowledging the appointment?
The Sewer Commission's recommending you guys are the actual appointing authority.
She's been hired as a-
Yeah, there is a, the, there is a misrepresentation in the letter, uh, but, yeah, like, as Tom mentioned, uh, the Board of Selectmen are the appointing authority, so it's actually the Board of Selectmen's appointment.
And, um, I believe you came into the town hall today, did some and was it finalized when your actual date would be?
Yes.
This coming Monday, she's available for starting this coming Monday.
If you're accepting motions, I'll make a motion
Yes.
that we appoint Elizabeth Marrera as the Senior Clerk in the Sewer Department Office effective May second. Am I correct?
Do I have a second on the motion? Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Hall is an aye. Thank you, congratulations, and thank you, welcome.
Thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity.
They're gonna love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, review, discuss, and act. I, on the advice of the Massachusetts Ethics Commission, must, uh, excuse myself from participation in the discussion and vote on this matter. At this time, I will step down, and Clerk, um, Mr. Peter Karen will now conduct the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks. We're going to review, discuss, and act the appointment recommendation by the Board of Health member. There is a letter that it should read, it's dated April twenty-fifth.
Oh, Mr. Chairman? So there has been an updated letter, if you could just read that?
Oh, is it this one instead?
Into the record, please.
Yep. April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Honorable Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health met, met on Monday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, to review and act on the recommendation of the interview screening panel, which consisted of the Board of Health Chairman, Town Administrator, Health Agent, and Health Agent for the vacant Board of Health Member position. The Board is pleased to recommend Nicole Mello, Mello, for the position, vacant position of Board of Health Member. Respectfully submitted Barbara Cadavia, Chairman, Board of Health. Any discussion?
No, I'm, I'll make a motion if you entertain a motion, I'll make a motion that the Board of Health appoint Nicole Mello as a member of the Board of Health.
And as the Chairman, I'll step back and, and, um, second that motion. All in favor?
I just want to, uh, it's my understanding that anything that the Board of Health addresses that would affect the public nurse, you're going to recuse yourself, uh, yeah. I'm voting aye.
And, uh, myself, I vote aye. You all set?
Congratulations.
Can I ask one thing of, of the board, if you could take a line item of, um, ten H, because it could change to me as well, and I'm not as young as you guys, I'm getting very tired.
Sure, we can do that now.
I think I'm the only person in this room here, so I'm going to make a motion that we take, uh, agenda item on the new business, ten H, out of order.
Update to Special Municipal Employee Designation List, Public Health Nurse.
Uh, so, uh, so yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe we also have...
Is there a second on my motion?
Oh, what?
Was there a second on my motion?
Oh, sorry, Jesus, I'm sorry.
I second that.
I'll vote aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you. Um, uh, so I believe you also have a letter in the packet, uh, from the Board of Health requesting, uh, that the Public Health Nurse be added, um, to the, uh, the Special Municipal Employee Designational List for the town, um, and so, uh, uh, the public, uh, the public, um, uh, uh, the sp- the Special Municipal Employee allows, oh, you know, oh, and, oh, uh, 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 like an envision, some, uh, some, uh, some town officials to hold multiple roles in a community, uh, but in order to do that, the Board of Selectmen has to recognize that. Uh, so this, uh, so this would add, uh, the public, uh, the position of Public Health Nurse, uh, uh, to being able to hold more than one role in the, uh, in our town government.
Right.
So I just, yeah, so that's the, uh, the, uh, uh, yeah, like that, oh, yeah, like that's like the background, but just for the public too, I just wanted to explain what that meant.
Okay. So there was a letter submitted to the Board of Health, uh, Selectmen, dated April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Honorable Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health is respectfully requesting that the Board of Selectmen name the town of Dyton Public Health Nurse Nicole Mello, a Special Municipal Employee, respectfully committed, submitted Barbara Cadavia, is that her name?
Cadavia, Barbara Cadavia.
Cadavia, uh, Chairman, Board of Health.
I'll make a motion that we update the Special Municipal Employee Designation List and add the Public Health Nurse.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodnight.
You too, thanks.
You're not going to stick around, huh?
I'm jealous.
Um, next on the agenda, appoint, review, discuss, and act, appoint Board of Selectmen member to the TIF Review Board. Um, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Mullin, um, who previously served in this position?
Uh, the, uh, uh, so at the last, so, so at the last, so at the last Selectmen's meeting, the Board, uh, the Board, the Board of the Selectmen reformed the membership, uh, of the TIF Review Board, uh, uh, so like we actually added members that included a designated, uh, or representative, uh, from the Board of Selectmen, uh, but in approving the, uh, the re, out of, uh, you know, the reformation, the reorganization of the Board, the Board didn't, uh, actually approve, uh, the Board didn't, uh, vote to designate one member of the Board to, uh, to the Board.
Is this a voting position or non-voting position?
It's a voting position.
Okay. Um, now, the TIF Review Board, it did exist at one point in time.
So yes, it was a, um...
Do you remember who was?
Uh, yeah, the Town Administrator, the, um, it's on the original TIF Review Board, the Town Administrator.
I think there was a resident, I think.
Yeah, like a resident, is, uh, there was a business, uh, there's a, uh, there's a Dyton Business Representative, and then there was a Chairman of the FinCom as well, uh, but, uh, but that appointment was actually, uh, was incongruent to the town bylaw because, uh, like a me- uh, like a member of the FinCom unless otherwise noted, uh, can't actually hold, uh, can't actually hold any other town position, uh, except as being a member of the FinCom.
Okay. Um, I'm going to ask, based on seniority, if Mr. Pacheco would be interested in serving on that position?
I, I am not interested.
Mr. Karen?
Sure.
Um, I will, at this time, make a motion to appoint Mr. Peter Karen as the Board of Selectmen representative to the TIF Review Board. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and second. Uh, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next order, review, discuss, and act, appoint Board of Selectmen member to the Agricultural Committee. I believe that position was held by Dr. Sigoffis, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, Mr. Pacheco, I, you're interested?
I would be interested.
Would be interested. Do I have a motion to...
I second that. Oh, motion to, uh, appoint Ken Pacheco.
Um, uh, do I have a second?
Second, oh.
Can I second? I don't know if I can.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, that's fine.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Nope, sorry.
Chairman Hall is an aye, motion passes. Review, discuss, and act, appoint Board of Selectmen member to the Open Space Committee. Um, Mr. Karen?
Yes, sir.
Um, currently, the only committee you are serving on is the TIF, is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, to provide some equity, um, do I have a m- motion?
If he's willing to accept it, I'll make a motion that Peter Karen be appointed as a member of the Open Space Committee.
Second that.
Motion has been made and seconded?
Is it a member or is that liaison person?
I think the agenda might have been...
Mr. Chairman, this is Kevin Smith, can I speak quick?
Non-voting?
Non-voting.
It's a non-voting member. Uh, Mr. Smith, yes?
That's all I wanted to add, yeah, it's just, it's a liaison position, and, um, I am, I'm the Chairman of the Open Space Committee, and I, I do think that, uh, Mr. Karen would be a good fit, given his experience with the planning board and CBA as well, because that's some of the things we're working on is residential design bylaws and things of that nature, so, um, thank you for accepting the nomination.
Thank you.
So I'll amend my motion to, uh, make it a non-voting member of the, uh, Open Space Committee.
I have a motion and second. Mr., Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is also an aye. If you discuss and act North Dyton Playground Fencing Contract, Southeast Fence Company, two seventy-one Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass, um, do I have any discussion on the this, uh, appointment?
Yeah, what of the contract, Mr. Chairman, and what the, uh, contract, uh, what, uh, if the board would so entertain, what, uh, the motion would be, um, uh, like is to authorize the Town Administrator, uh, uh, to execute the contract on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Uh, are there any?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Town Administrator, Michael Mullin, uh, to sign the contract for the North Dyton Playground fencing with Southeast Fence Company, two seventy-one Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass, that it's to begin on May first and to be completed by June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and not to exceed twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Um, acknowledgements. Do we have any correspondence? Mr. Mullin?
Uh, I, I would do, Mr. Chairman, we do have an email, um, uh, it's from Timothy Ryan's, I just want to pull it up real quick, uh, but the, uh, the email does tend to his resignation.
I have it before me, it says, "Good morning."
Oh, thank you.
Have a good morning, Mark Pacheco.
I just wanted to...
"I respectfully resign from all positions held in the town of Dyton, signed by Timothy F. Ryan's," citizen.
Um, at this time, do I have a motion to accept?
Uh, motion to accept.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, Mr. Pacheco?
I just want to comment also that I thank, uh, Mr. Ryan's for all the work he's done for the town over the many, many years he's been involved. So I second.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate that it came to this, um, I don't know if there was another way, but he chose to resign, so it was his own choosing.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, in regards to Mr. Ryan's?
Yes.
He has provided many, many years of outstanding service to the town of Dyton, and for that we appreciate, uh, his service. I, I hope in the coming years, he would reconsider and return to some role in town government, because he has done a, a lot of good for this town. Um, I will also, um, vote to accept his resignation. Thank you. Uh, minutes, approval of the Board of Selectmen regular meeting, meeting minutes of April...
Just for quick, Mr. Chairman, like, under resignation, uh, uh, there is, there is now a vacancy on the planning board, um, uh, which is, uh, which is an elected board of the town, as we know, um, I can, uh, I can talk, and, I've been talking with the office manager for the planning board, she, uh, 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 like has been trying to plan a time, uh, like, uh, like where, like in the next few weeks, we post the vacancy, um, and then, uh, like, in talking with, I've been talking with her this afternoon, uh, the planning board has a meeting, uh, like on May the eighteenth, and one of the things that she was asking, uh, 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 yeah, uh, yeah, one of the things she was asking, if the board could be amenable to a joint meeting that night, uh, like a ju- uh, 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 oh, excuse me, like, actually, like a, actually a joint meeting with the planning board to consider the joint appointment, uh, to fill the vacancy.
They have posted the position, correct?
Uh, uh, we would post, so we would post the vacancy after tonight, now that the resignation has been accepted by the Board of Selectmen.
Do we need to take a vote on that, or is that just part of the process?
Just part of the process. Us, us, uh, so we would post, uh, so we would post, uh, we would post the vacancy, post it for the next two and a half weeks.
And the vacancy applications would go to who?
They, they would go to the office of the Selectmen, um, um, and then they would be distributed to the members of the planning board and the Selectmen in advance, in advance of the joint meeting, uh, 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 like, uh, which members, uh, oh, yeah, like, I'm sorry, like, uh, which residents, uh, who would be interested for, uh, the appointment to fill the unexpired term, uh, like would be interviewed jointly by the members of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board for appointment.
Okay, logistically?
Yes.
Um, who would run that meeting?
Uh, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, like it would, uh, like it, uh, like it would be, uh, the meeting would be held during a planning board meeting, but that portion of it would be a joint meeting, uh, so the planning board, uh, the, uh, whoever the planning board chairman is at that time...
Will run the, conduct the meeting.
Would run the planning board portion, and you, uh, like, and you as a Chairman of the Board of Selectmen would run the Board of Selectmen portion.
We're doing combined interview, correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yes, it's all semantics, but like...
Similar to what we did with the higher, the filling of the school committee?
Yes, exactly, the same exact process, you know, we're both, yes.
There would be, the Chairman would run that process?
Yes, there would be two meetings at the same time, but yes, yes.
And we would, we would then vote to close our section of the meeting?
Yes, yes.
So it would be just, and very similar to what we did with the school committee?
Yes.
So as a result, they will conduct that process, the Chairman?
Yes, for our practical, our practical purposes, yes.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that we're going to be at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes, right at the beginning, so the Board of Selectmen could be in and out.
Yeah.
Good. Now, how many candidates will they be interviewing?
Uh, they'd be interviewing any interested resident.
So they're all applicants?
All applicants, yes.
They're not going to have a pre-screening committee?
No, no, uh, uh, no, no, this, uh, no, this is different from an appointed position, this is an elected position, uh, so all residents who have an interest, all residents or anyone with an interest will come forward.
And Mr. Pacheco, Mark, has been appraised and is aware of the process, so that transparency?
So yes, he will be, absolutely, for sure.
Um, any further questions in regards to Planning Board and the appointment of replacement for Mr. Ryan's? Um, okay, I will, at this time, since everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the April thirteenth meeting?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes of April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Uh, Chairman Hall is an aye. Approval of the warrants, Mr. Pacheco?
I want to make a motion that we approve the warrants of, of April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, forty-two A dash two twenty-two, hundred and five thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-five cents, and forty-two B, twenty-two, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Uh, public input?
We have, excuse me, we have a second set of warrants.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the warrants for April 27, 2022, 43A-22, $116,316.18, 43B-22, $18,214.2, and 43C-22, $70,201.64.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Public input, at this time, do we have any public input? No? Okay, um, we will be going into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collecting, collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, so declares. A, Dyton Firefighters Local 4332, Dyton Highway Department Local 1701, C, Dyton Police Officers Mass Cop Local 306, D, Rachel Rose versus the Town of Dyton. Under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the public body, a potential real property acquisition for library operations. Under Massachusetts General Law 38, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Also in the executive session, uh, we will approve, uh, of the Board of Selectmen Executive Session Meeting Minutes of April 6, 2022, and the approval of the Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting Minutes of April 13, 2022. It is my understanding that we will not be returning to open session. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Karen, motion made and seconded to enter into executive session. Chairman Hall is also an aye. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Thank you.